All right, let's bring the Wednesday, January 27th, 2021 regular meeting of Dune City Council to order. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Forsyth?
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
Councilor Duclaus.
Here.
Councilor Bob Ohr.
Here.
Councilor Tom Mellon.
Here.
Uh, Councilor Ellen Montgomery, I have not heard from. Councilor Snow. And soon to be sworn in, Councilor Rory Hammond.
Yeah, Rory. Sworn in.
Sworn in.
A pledge of allegiance.
Sworn in.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Swearing in, new and returning councilors in America.
If I could have you all come forward.
What?
Are you want to go where you're at?
We're here, we should be good.
Okay, those of you.
We'll raise our hands.
Those of you who are being sworn out. Sworn in. Raise your right hand.
Yeah. Which one is that?
Your other right.
Yeah.
I state your name.
Rory Hammond.
Rory Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend.
I will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon.
The Charter and Codes of the City of Dune City.
The Charter and Codes of the City of Dune City.
And Bob, you will say mayor, you will say councillor. And that I will faithfully perform the duties of.
I will faithfully perform the duties of councillor.
To the best of my ability, so long as I am in office.
To the best of my ability, so long as I am in office.
And if you would come. I'm going to sign it there. You always like.
We missed the "till death do us part."
Till death do us part.
Yeah, but no kissing, right?
That's right.
Only with the mask on.
What's that?
Only with the mask on.
Oh, okay.
Well, leave a hand.
Did you notice I did that without moving my lips?
You always assume that I said something.
Thank you guys for running.
Thank you very much. Yay!
And in the right direction, not away. Pardon me? And in the right direction, not away. That's right, that's right.
Yeah, Tom, did you stand for that?
No.
You didn't run this last time, did you? Or did you? You did, didn't you?
No, I did.
Now, I've got one here for you, which means that your name needed to be done something to.
Yeah, no, I was elected.
Did you stand and swear?
Just now?
Uh huh.
Uh, no.
Would you like to?
If you need me to, I will.
I do.
Okay, I'll do that. Sorry.
Okay, raise your right hand. I, Tom Mellon.
I, Tom Mellon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend.
That I will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon.
Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
The Charter and Codes of the City of Dune City.
Charter and Codes of the City of Dune City.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the city councillor to the best of my ability.
The duties of city councillor to the best of my ability.
So long as I am in office.
So long as I am in office. Thank you.
Where's the press? Any press coverage for this? Okay, okay, just checking. How is it that you even have time? That's a really good question. Because I keep seeing the committees you're on now. Ah, too much, yes. See, there's this little word called "no thank you." Called what? No thank you. No thank you? I don't know that one. Obviously not. My, my wife wishes I did. There you go.
I think the word's out on you, too.
Yeah, yeah. All right, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we pass. And entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With amended bills of some.
With amended bills. Three move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we pass those. Announcements and correspondence.
The city is still looking for a planning secretary. The position is a 20-hour-per-week job with one or two evening meetings a month. Starting pay is $14 an hour. It is a pers position. Strong typing, grammar, and spelling skills are a must. Applicant should be able to pay close attention to detail to ensure accuracy.
Thank you. Do we have any citizen input today?
Yes.
Thank you. Loyola Washburn.
Yes.
Please, come on up and.
Letters.
Uh huh.
Their end after it is all get out. And whoever printed it needs to find out their operation better than this.
Their what?
The operation, the input.
Okay.
I've been here all my life. I was born over at Ben, so I've lived in Oregon all my life.
Okay.
These are not whitetail, dear, they're blacktail. Whitetail is on the eastern side of the state.
Okay.
And I don't feed them corn because I knew what corn would do. I feed them popcorn.
Okay.
And I had a doe come in that I could see every rib in her body. And by the time spring or summer was over, I knew she could at least get through the fall. And then you guys come up with this kind of garbage.
There is a city ordinance.
Did you put that in the paper? Did you print it anyplace? I never heard of this, and I don't come to these meetings.
Heck, did you receive a letter saying that there was a city ordinance not to feed deer?
In one of these letters, it was the first time.
Okay, and that was just the first time? Did you stop feeding deer at that point?
Of course, when some snitchy person drove by to take a picture and they sent pictures. What did they expect? I've got apple trees in my yard. I suppose I gotta say, oh, deer, don't eat them.
No, you just don't intentionally feed them.
I don't, they stand on their hind legs and pick them up.
And that's fine, as long as you.
And they eat my roses, but you don't hear me crying about it.
No, nor, nor do I when they eat ours.
So what was this deal about not being able to feed popcorn?
You're not, you're not.
You're not supposed to feed corn.
You're not, you're not supposed to feed wild animals at all in this state or in Florence. And if you look up ODFNW, they tell you not to feed wild animals as well. Every city that I'm aware of in Oregon has a non-feeding of wild animal ordinance. And we have one, and it doesn't specify what not to feed them.
Well, I think you should get your information straight.
About the species of deer, is that what you're concerned about?
Yes, I'm not, yes.
Okay, that's, that is probably an error as far as species, but our ordinance does not specify species. It specifies do not feed wild animals, including deer. And it doesn't matter what we're feeding them.
I don't feed the bear, and I don't feed coos.
Okay, but you feed deer.
I was feeding deer.
Right, and you're not supposed to feed deer.
And we put that law in in last year, 2019, according to your paper.
I don't know when it was ratified, but it's been in the state for many years. Yes, it has. Look up ODFNW's website, and it tells you do not feed the wild animals.
And where does that verb is that coming from?
ODFNW ordinance, or Oregon Fish and Wildlife.
So then the hunters that spread their corn out to catch and shoot a deer, oh, that's illegal here?
It absolutely is.
No, it isn't.
It certainly is. It doesn't matter how long you've been doing something wrong. It's a matter of the fact that you've been doing it wrong. And, and baiting animals according to, according to ODFNW has been wrong for many years.
Well, I haven't had a deer die yet from feeding popcorn.
It's.
And I don't like people driving by with a camera taking a picture of me. That's sneaky.
It might be sneaky.
Why didn't they knock on the door and say, oh, haven't you heard? You're not supposed to feed them? No, I hadn't heard.
Okay.
And I don't attend meetings. I just wanted to blow off steam. So you guys just go in and, I thought they said you was out of the job.
Me?
Well, aren't you Robert Forsyth?
I am.
Well, the top of the letter said you were no longer that. Don't ask me, I'm just saying what I said. Now, I said my piece.
I appreciate it, and, and you need.
And I've been here all my life, and I'm 84 years old. And the reason I took to feeding the deer, if you drive by going towards the resort. The deer creamed all my, the tall evergreens, they were hungry.
Oh, yeah.
So what are you supposed to do, let them die? You can't answer that. Then the people driving said, oh, you cut down a tree because we can't see enough down the roadway for oncoming cars. So now they speed around them. Ash, I'm going home.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. What, what brought that up? And I'm not sure if we covered it the other day, or last week. And I, I was neglectful. I told Jamie I was going to call, and then the more I read this, the more I got upset and didn't. But Jamie got a message from Dean Washburn. It said about your letter regarding the deer, there's no whitetail deer around here. They were feeding popcorn to their deer. Mr. Washburn is very upset, demands a return phone call, or he's going to raise hell. So I was going to call, and then I thought, you know what? I don't like being told what to do, and I don't like to be threatened by somebody telling me I'm going to raise hell. So I was like, no, if you want to come to the meeting and address the issue, then come to the meeting. And as I told Loyola, whether you agree or disagree about feeding wild animals, we have an ordinance. Florence has an ordinance, Jean has an ordinance, and the state tells you don't feed wild animals, and that on their list includes deer. So whether we agree to it or we don't agree to it, it's the ordinance. Now, if you like that ordinance changed, then there's a method to come and change the ordinance. But until then, you know, we've got to uphold it. I find it difficult to believe that we've only, only entered that ordinance in 2019, but.
Actually, I think it's 2019, I think it was more recent than that.
I thought, I thought it was a lot more recent than that.
It's last.
Five, six months ago, or something.
Was it?
Yeah, it was 2019.
Was it?
Okay.
Doesn't our ordinance just specify deer?
Yes.
Okay, where does it come up that it's whitetail or blacktail or?
In the letter, I was quoting ODFNW, and the quote actually contains whitetail deer.
Misspoke on the spoken.
Yeah.
The other thing, and I think, you know, I think it's game animals. It's not against a lot of these squirrels or birds or stuff like that.
It gives a list of the actual animals.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's the typical, you know, raccoons and deer and air and, you know, yeah.
Nuisance.
Nuisance animals, yeah. And they don't get into, you know, yardage. Oh, and birds, all birds are fine in theirs, but, and you cannot use bait of any sort. You can't feed your bear to, call him, to come in, and you can't feed. And I, I have a mother-in-law that just turned 89, that's what you're all are like. So we go through these conversations.
She would have probably chewed on your heart.
Yeah, you know, it's like, yes, you used to be able to do all this stuff. And, you know, I can sell the still, just get rid of it. If you can't do that anymore.
That's why you just did so well, Bob, you're accustomed to it.
Yeah, you stay nine years. Yeah, you're honoring my mother-in-law, so, okay.
Great job.
Thank you. There are, there are reasons that we, as we discussed back when that came about. There were reasons that we felt that we'd been asked to look into it, and we did. And it's, it's, it's not healthy for the deer or the people. Well, the thing, the interesting thing that I found that was good was when we did the survey with ODFNW. They came out and surveyed the deer that we have around. And the fact that it was not, one, abnormal amount of deer, and, two, they weren't unhealthy. In fact, I'm thinking about the, one of the does that she said she could see the ribs on it. Uh, they're neighborhood does. I mean, so we see them, and she lives just, you know, her property and mine are just across the street from each other. I believe, and, you know, my wife has been here forever, and so she's actually, she can name the deer. You know, and she can. Oh, is that right? There's a notch in the ear or whatever. That particular doe had triplets the year before. Well, you're feeding three deer, you know, three babies, it's tough. Yes, you could. And what happened is one of the, one of those does, or one of those fawns died. And shortly after that, all of a sudden, that doe started filling out. You know, they were, it was just a drain on her. I'm sure that that's probably not a normal thing, but anyway. But my whole thing is, it's the ordinance. There's a way to change it that you want to change. I think you did a really fine job, and it would have been perfect if you just delegated that to Sheldon. I'm attached, the other day I was thinking about saying that, you know, I'm sorry, but he was the one that insisted on. Yeah, all right, yeah.
I would have explained to her the theory of aging, first you rip it, then you rot.
All right, no presentations, no old business, no public carries.
Actually, there, oh, no, no, there's not, no, go ahead.
New business, resolution, 2021 number one.
Number one.
All right.
In a couple of days, the Oregon Community Pass Grant is due for submission. We are requesting a grant in the amount of $205,000, I believe. This would be to be used first to pay for wetland delineation of the lands that we purchased for Rebecca's Trail for purposes of identifying the best location for that trail across the wetlands that would cause the least harm. Or across the properties. The whole idea is to try and avoid the wetlands as much as we possibly can. The Scioto Law Watershed Council did give us, our pile volunteered on his own. He is with the Scioto Law Watershed Council when he was out of work because of COVID early on in the spring. And he did come out and take some pictures of the property and walked through there and determined that we actually have some endangered plant species there and some special plants and things that are really worth protecting. So anyway, so we have the delineation, which I believe is also part of the agreement. Yes, that I, that I amended the agreement for to put it on there. He's offering to do that delineation for $7,500, which is good. And then we have brought our own, he's already our engineer anyway, from Civil West Engineering, onboard for purposes of designing that trail, that initial trail, which has to be ADA compliant and paid. So hopefully, if we get this grant, we can move forward on that and at least get the initial trail in in the next year or two.
That'd be great.
But I have to have your approval to do that, to submit it, and that's what the resolution is recommending, is approval.
So I entertain a motion to accept the resolution 2021 number one, as written.
Two move.
Second. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we move forward.
Thank you.
Set, goal setting, all right.
Just for brimming biggles, I gave you guys a recap of what the goals were and what has been accomplished.
Is this a, is this a launching or an actual decision-making at this point? Are we, are we launching the process?
That's up to you guys.
Okay.
You're driving the gun.
Okay.
So basically, I'm, I'm goal setting. You can look at what we did in December and see mentally, if you look through these, is there anything that you agreed with, disagreed with, you would like to do different? Is there something we need to add to it? There is absolutely nothing that stops us from changing anything or moving forward or more aggressively on things. These are the types of things that we can do as long as we have the memory to do so. As we go through them, we want to make sure, as Rory mentioned last year, that we make sure that we have the funding to, to achieve or to at least make headway on any goal that we, that we have put forward.
Right, that's what the budget committee would do.
Do we even have a budget committee yet?
Actually, tonight, we're going to get another.
I meant besides.
My husband's still on it. Yes.
You still have a husband?
I still do.
All right, good job. Let's have a bad one.
And I am beating the bushes still on. Maybe we should invite Mrs. Washburn. If I, if you need some questions answered, just let me know.
Well, I think the goals look good, and it looks to me like we've made some good progress on a number of them from 2020. Do you need a motion to approve these, or just okay them, or?
Well, one thing I'd like to do, like I said before, I know that we have goals, and those we've done, can we move them like to a completed page so that the goals we're looking at are ones that we actually need to work on?
It's good idea. Plus, I'd like, it would be nice to be able to, at the end of the year, to have a recap of those things that we actually did achieve. Because I think we tend to complete something, go yay, and then move on, and then we don't ever recap it either in the year and say, look, this is what we actually did. That would be nice if it would be, uh, you made a comment, Jamie, that the meters are in?
They have arrived, and we will start installing them.
So they're here, now they need to be installed.
Correct, and at $3 to $5 for installation fee, I am not going to do them all at once.
Uh, we can.
I didn't budget it.
Am I missing a document here?
You may be.
What I'm looking at is the 2020 goals in review.
Right.
But is there?
Two pages it in is reminded is what the goals were.
Okay, those two pages are what the goals were, right? Then is there a, a set of proposed goals for this year that I'm, or have we not?
No, there is not.
We haven't done anything on that yet.
You haven't done anything.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
That's for you to come up with, Bob.
Right. Oh, that's my job?
It's wide open.
Oh, great.
I think what we did last time, Bob, was we, because we've done this before, and we never did anything to carry it forward, this time we said, wait a minute, let's move these along, start to get them done, and then we can add to them as we go and make it a living document.
Okay, okay.
So when I look at the 2020 goals, in there it was talking about the benefits of community water systems and enterprise-develop municipal water systems. That was part of that goal to recognize and do that. I don't see that in the 2021 goals. The other, the other thing that I see missing in those goals is that we haven't talked about funding or how we would pay for that, or what sort of fees and things that we could do to do that. And, I mean, I, I think the goals are great, I'm looking at that, but I'm not sure if part of that is part of talking about the budget committee and seeing how to, how to finance, or if we have enough money and things like that.
Exactly, because we tend to do that, as you know, as you can remember with it. So we tend to do that and go, okay, is, one, this is really a cool goal, do we have the money to?
Oh, I'm missing a page.
Oh.
That's my problem. I couldn't figure out what you were talking about.
I've, I've been told that for years.
I think that has both sides.
Well, I don't want to, I mean, you're, no, I got one next.
Oh, you got one?
There was one, there was two here.
Okay.
Let's take a look at the.
That's what I need, thank you.
Does it make a little more sense?
It makes a whole lot more sense now.
All right. Yes, Rory, you're right. As we get into the, to the budget committee, seems to overlap into that and say, okay, do we have the money to do that? And then which ones of those do we want to attack because we do have the money to do that kind of function? Is that correct? Have we been, the last time we've had those, we kind of categorized the goals that were important, and then we categorized the ones that we actually had money to move forward, if I'm not mistaken.
Kind of, yes.
And so certainly the water resource is a strategic thing. Some of these other things, I'm not sure if they're strategic or tactical. And, and, you know, we have, you have the, we have the water quality, which has to do with subject systems and things like that. Those are strategic goals, and we want to keep the water quality. I think that's part of our city charter and things like that. And then how are we going to do that, or that, and how is that going to be funded to do that, things of that sort?
Right, it comes into the strategic part.
I did have something I wanted to bring up under the order, but I can bring it up right now because goals is a good place for it. And it was something that the council haven't just touched on. The time was coming when the city has to make a decision whether they want to do a citywide water system or not. I mean, that's the bottom line. Or do we want to find a way to get rid of the whole thing? Or do we want to try and bite the bullet and move forward? There are a number of webinars coming out regarding funding that's available for justice purpose for small cities through USDA. And, and it's low interest, no interest. I mean, some of it's grants, some of it's part grants, some of it's low interest, as in like less than 1% interest, this side of the kind of thing. And so it doesn't mean that we have to do it. It just means that we can look at ways, first of all, to find out if it's even feasible. I mean, will people come by and will they join up? Because we don't want to have to force anybody into it. Or maybe it's only feasible because in the past, what they have done is like phase one is Westlake. And phase two is somewhere else, and phase three, it's like a seven phases. So maybe we just look at doing the one phase, which is Westlake, because right now, people who live on Silcoos are most, for the most part, are willing to look at the possibility of a drinking system.
The water quality and the levels of stuff are more important to residents in Silcoos than they are.
The same thing is going to happen on, well, we need it someday. Won't be, I don't think, in any of our lifetimes, but.
Yeah, probably.
And so if we have paved the way from some of it, then when the time comes, it won't be, oh, my God, we need this tomorrow. You know, so I'm just trying to think of the future.
When are these coming up?
Huh?
What are these, you said they're seminars?
Yes, they're coming up in the next few days, well, February, early part of February. I have my copies, I'm trying to find them. Anyway, I have them, but I thought, well, you know, if you appointed an ad hoc committee of a couple of people who may be interested in this and moving forward, then it would be easier than everybody sitting in on webinars two or three hours. You're going to be gone, I can see you in a motel room.
Yeah, no, that's really what I would do, is stop. So this, this is a goal setting. These are, these are goals that we want to vote on to do that. The problem with the water rights that I see is that we have Silcoos water rights. We don't have, you know, state housing, we have wells, we have community systems, and we have well maintenance, things like that. And it's a big, there's a big shocking thing. We don't really, as a city, how can we make those goals and tackle them unless they're a little more centralized? I mean, it's, we have decentralized things, and that's a problem, and that's not really part of this discussion. And that's not really part of this discussion, but somewhere when we do that goal, those have to be discussed and how are we gonna strategize or what sort of tactics are we gonna do to make it inclusive?
And the city doesn't actually have to own them.
That's right.
It can be through somebody else and.
Right. And should we be charging fees, you know, because they're part of the city so that we can pay for all this? And that's all, but that's not, that's not the discussion of this, but that's the discussion of the goal later.
Yeah, and I think the reason we put the water one up there is so.
Because it's a big issue.
It's a big project and you're right, it needs to be looked at in that fashion and it needs a group. And it's not something that we can do at a city council meeting. It's something that we have to have multiple meetings on and breaking it down and saying, what's the best strategy to take this up? But I think you're right, Jamie, without some input from seminars or what have you, those could be very helpful in to see. I really hate trying to reinvent wheels. I mean, if other people have done it and they're similar to us, I would much rather plagiarize something than to try to invent it. And the way we are spread out and then the top, I can't even say that.
Topography.
Topography of how we are and where we are is very important, multiple lakes, water sources. So, yeah, it's gonna take a bunch of work, so I think it's gonna have to be a different, I hate to use the term, but it's gonna have to be a different committee or subset of some sort to start digging into this. Bob can't say no, so he's.
I'm thinking, I don't know where this is going, but I don't like it.
But I think it's something that we need to, we really need to form as.
I like what you're saying, there is, I think, a specific group of people in Dune City that are really in more need of water equality, water quality, and that'd be the folks that are now getting the water from Silkus. So maybe they should be tipping a spear on that and see what we can do for them.
Have them involved in it, yeah.
And I think if we just narrow that focus down instead of the whole of Dune City, you know, like the Westlake thing and or anybody of Keachley or, you know, that area, sure, us, focus on that.
Yeah, and I would.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and that's what I think in a very short meeting of a subcommittee of some sort can come to that conclusion really quick, I think. Who have you drawn water off of Wolling? You did, right. And I don't think there, have you heard any water quality issues there?
On Wolling? Not yet. This year, yes, it's staying.
For the most part, I think you're right, Silkus seems to be the big hit for levels and quality.
Levels, levels are a big thing, you have to down pump.
Yeah, yes, friends of mine have sold that property that they own, but they were continually talking about, a couple of years ago, when we were really dry, they're going, it's sucking mud. It would get down so low.
I'd like to bring up that I think part of that is because we don't have any say into the dam. And having say into the dam and the level, I think would have a big thing to do with having water quality.
And I know, I know it's a big ask, but I think a subcommittee on that is gonna have to look at all of those or at least identify those issues so then another group attacks that or, you know what I'm saying? This water thing is not gonna be a four line item process. It's gonna be in depth and because of some of the issues. So my thought is that we form a subcommittee to look at this particular issue and as that group finds issues like the dam, that they can ask for help and, you know, break into another group if we have to. I would have no problem looking into the, anything that has to do with contracts and procurement negotiations, if you want me and I will do it. I would love to talk to the people about the dam. I'd love to look into the old documentation and stuff that they have and sort of, just to make sure that we're up to something.
So in regards to the goal setting, I move that we accept the proposed goals that are on 2021 fiscal year because I think they're reasonable.
I agree with you. Any second. Any further discussion on accepting the goals as they were written? All in favor? Any opposed? Here in the, we actually had a discussion before a motion.
Yeah.
We kind of did, but, so yes, I think we need to look at those years soon, dividing some of that out and getting a subcommittee started. That would also, Susan, that would involve some of the things that you're interested in too, right, with the water quality.
I was gonna say, I really think it falls under the water quality.
So that would be, that would kind of be a good start and then branch off on whatever we need from that going forward. Do you have, how many people do you have on that right now?
We didn't meet last year due to COVID, so I don't know how many people would still be active and reasonable, but we had about 10 or 12.
Really? Okay, great.
But that doesn't mean they're gonna be interested in.
Would you?
Most of them are not interested in Silkus Lake. That was my problem before.
Oh, that's right, yes. Do you have, you have some that are interested in Silkus Lake now?
There are a couple of people on there that are interested in Silkus.
Would you reach out, do us a favor and reach out and find out if they would be interested in being on a subcommittee to start this off or at least have the conversations?
I will do that.
And get back to us and then from there we can branch off and start really looking at how to get some of this, some of this stuff. Thank you, really appreciate it. Reappointment, Jamie, is it Gordon?
Gordon.
Gordon to the planning commission?
Yes. She was already serving on the planning commission. Her term is up, so she's reapplying and we're asking that she be reappointed.
Side note, how many do you think for another planning commission?
Five.
Is that right? Is that enough? Is that, are we still looking for people?
No, that, right now we have a filler.
It is?
It is.
All right. We have a volunteer to continue on a committee, is that? Seriously enough, that does want that to happen?
Jamie, by the way, is terrific. I've worked with her in her capacity with the police department. She's just, yeah, police department. She's terrific. I don't.
Reappoint her.
Yeah, good, I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Very nice, she's reappointed.
Okay, but Councilor Wells, I'm gonna put you down as abstaining. Derek? And I'll put you down as abstaining because you're a relative of them.
A relative?
Yes.
You guys couldn't tell? I'm just surprised that your brother had. I just thought they would all be in jail, dude.
She just got out of the line.
Oh.
I forgot, I got so psyched up with you that I. Did you make the motion? Did you make the motion?
I second.
Sheldon.
Sheldon, thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna, budget committee, is it Vanderwal?
Vanderwood.
Vanderwood?
Yes, Sandy is our permit tech.
Oh, okay.
And her husband is now interested in seeing what she does. Now, he wants to know more about what the city does. And I told him that the best place was the budget committee.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can use all the help we can on that, so. Anybody want a motion to?
I just think, I mean, my neighbor.
No, you're not related to him. Yeah.
It's a small town.
Anybody want to give a motion on?
I'll move that one.
Move Ted forward?
Sure.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any none? Ted's in on our group.
They will lay all my copies.
Consent of group rate form for SIC.
The C I S.
Oh, C I S.
City County Insurance Services, it's really C C I S. All of a sudden, out of the blue, they've decided that we might be able to get better rates if we all just kind of went together as a group for this. And so they've sent out a consent form asking cities to sign the consent so they can explore that further. If you.
For other cities combining?
Right, getting together to basically.
So do they already insure us? Or do we get our safe insurance from some, any other than safe?
No, we get, we get it from them anyway, so.
Well, it's interesting if they already insure us, they know what the rate is.
Well, they know what the rate is, we just have to consent to allow them.
To seek other.
Use us to get down.
Try to bundle it.
But as you'll see in the consent form, it says that we don't have to go that way if we don't want to. Even after the back, even after signing it, they do the research to see what it comes out to be with everybody added together. They could do that with us, but I guess they can't.
Yeah, so when I, I used to work for an insurance company, I was a claims adjuster and it was an underwriting thing. They have all this stuff, I was wondering why they need our permission to figure it out, but.
For the city? I don't know.
Maybe something to do that as they're doing the research, they may have to dispose of it or something else. I move that we give a consent to the C I S. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Very none? Would you move forward with that?
I wonder if they didn't have to ask for that, if the rate would be lower, they could have had less than the standard.
That's right. May I look at the insurance?
This one here?
Agreement for services with wetlands and wildlife.
Right, that is, with wetlands and wildlife, that's Brian Mearing, he is the water rights expert that is, that I found to do a delineation. Oh, that one, delineation. And actually, like I said, it's not really a full delineation. A delineation was done in, I don't know, 2003 or something like that, so it's just bringing it forward. It was 2006. Just be updating it. Considering it's 48 acres, still pretty good size update.
So we got $100?
Yes, $1,500.
We're gonna, we're gonna move forward on that, we need to do that. Quite honestly, when I've been involved with wetlands and stuff, it doesn't seem to be outrageous. Especially for that size. Anybody have any concerns with this?
I need to look at it from. I did, I, well, this is.
I have it right there on the table, I don't know what happened to it.
Bob needs your homework?
Yeah. Wait a minute. Okay, here we go, never mind. Got it, thank you. Now I got it.
Hang around those ice cream kids too.
I am, Charlie.
So my, my question is that if we don't do it, then we don't put a path in, is that right?
Right.
So it's kind of.
Yeah.
It's kind of forced into it, it's just a matter of is this a good price or not? I could find more than one engineer that does this. I mean, around here, Wilbur Turnip used to be the go-to, and when he passed away, we, there's nobody luckily that does it.
And that's part of the problem with a lot of things we do on the coast when it comes to whether getting your house appraised or, you know, inspectors and stuff, is bringing them down from Port Alpes or something, kind of having that. It's just one of the major things that we have on the coast.
So is this a one-day project or a five-day project or a 30-day project?
It's, I think he anticipated nine months. Because it's a, you got to get it through the state. So the state has to.
Also walk it through.
Right, yeah. It's kind of a whole process going in there. But really, the other part I got, just with a telephone call discussion with somebody on the end of the phone, was between 14, 15,000 dollars though.
Well, he's already walked it, so he knows what he's gonna do, right, he's already walked it.
No, it's not.
I move that we approve the services proposal.
Nice second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Very none? Would you move forward with that? We don't have any executive session. We haven't had one of those one time, we gotta make something up.
When are we making something up when we're getting? I gotta wipe on that one.
Yeah, it's true. Okay, mayor report, I was gonna talk to you about the letter that I got from Washington that that's done. The other thing is Cindy and I are leaving tomorrow for a month. We may or may not be back into the February, I'm not sure. So we're just dragging and hoping to many different friends. We have a bunch of friends from the United States and we're gonna stay a week in St. Peter'sburg with my, in Florida, with my son and his wife. We may or may not, depending on if we buy any cars along the way or. Glad we have a couple to look at in Sherman, Texas. But, so we'll be gone, Sheldon will be here. Y'all have his number, use it frequently.
This is when we start coming up with things that we've got, you know, tough stuff to deal with.
Important things.
Yeah.
But, and thank you to all that have sworn in tonight for coming back and everything's scared away. And Rory, thank you very much for all you've done in the past and being able to see fit to join us.
Still coming back.
You'd be a big help, I'm sure. Community center report.
Well, I see that Jamie's been working on improving the drain system out here.
Drain system and, you know, the last couple of storms have blown lots of roof material off, so we put that back on. And redid the front out here and, you know, make progress on the goal for getting that front done out front. I have torn my rotator cuff, so when you see me do this, it's because I can't do my own.
Anyway, what were you, like, what are you thinking, getting commercial site road route and address and a helper? I would be volunteering obviously to help Richard do that when the time comes.
What was, oh, you mean.
So we're cleaning the drains.
Oh, yeah, okay. Richard, along with virtually everybody who removes trees in this town, is up working on fire. Except for Charlie Johnson's still here. Well, Terry was gone for two weeks. I just talked to him two days ago. Terry Johnson?
Charlie.
Charlie Johnson. Oh, is Charlie bad? Because he wasn't. I've been trying to call him for two weeks and he hasn't answered. I go to his house.
Thomas Fox works for me and he's here.
Who?
Thomas Fox.
Oh, yes, somebody else gave me his name today. I didn't know him. He was at the. So I got his name today, but anyway, Richard is still up there. He did come down last Saturday and knocked some trees down and caused hate and discontent in the neighborhood. And so now I have to get that squared away and I gotta get it cleaned up. He says he might be back this weekend, he never knows when he's gonna make it back. Not that I blame him, he's gonna do it well. Doing good work up there, proud of him, so.
We also got installed the new safety glass and stuff, everybody's seen that. And I was gonna ask you for what we're gonna do, the new heater system and.
Yes.
Is it working well with everything?
Everything is working fine now. It wasn't initially, but we got that worked out. The next thing is to get rid of the tree because that tree, every morning, we must have 200 crows on our roof.
When I left today?
Yeah.
They were dancing all the time.
Sounds like they're, you know, up in the attic having a party. Anyway, but I think if we get rid of the tree, the trees, the crow will go away.
And the last thing is that we're gonna do a repave on the exterior of the parking lot out here and remove where the islands and the trees weren't, just to make that a complete surface out there.
Right, and we will do that when Norman has, Norm's just gonna add it on to whatever project he's working on that he has leftover asphalt, leftover materials. So, yeah, those are the things that we're doing here. So, yeah, those are the things that we're doing here.
Excellent. Water quality? Still not being...
It's still there, you know, we're not being...
Excellent. And not much you can do about it. Regency services, Jamie?
We have re-received, I don't know if you have seen it or not, I meant to make sure you all had one. This is the...
We really need us.
OHA rollout of that connection, if you haven't seen it. It is subject to change and it is currently being discussed as a change right now. But for now, that's what we have. The focus was kind of made clear, I guess, at that. Did anybody go to the discussion that was held in town? The town hall meeting? It sounded to me, and I don't, it's just my opinion or my husband's opinion, actually, it's not even mine, that he felt like, you know, it was big cities first, which makes sense. You know, they're gonna get more people over there. And so hopefully though, we will have some more vaccines soon and can move forward on it. Uh, let's see. The WeLa meeting was supposed to include until the 25th, which was last Monday. I did attend that. They're just about done with the EOP revision, the emergency operations plan revision for the roof and then we will move into the different appendices, which will be, one of which is Dune City by itself. And so that will be coming up in the near future. That was part of the discussion at the last meeting about who's gonna do what. I'm going to assign people, not people, I'm going to assign positions to do certain things under our EOP and... And I'm sorry, that's just the way it is. It's just gonna happen. And let's see. Nothing more on that really. There's a lot going on, but I'm going to tear that I said it all. We did, on the city reporters' report, we had 18 permits between November 18th and January 20th, so two months. Property's still flying off. I mean, it's listed for sale, look on one, it was listed yesterday, it's for sale today. I mean, it was, I mean, it's in the escrow today. I mean, that's, that's what's happening. That's how fast it is. It's so very busy, lots and lots of lean search and meeting with realtors and people to discuss the issues associated with whatever properties they're looking at.
When you put it there, I noticed that there was, was it seven structure? Is that houses or is that anything above 200 square feet?
When there is a new build, I will let you know. In this case, it did include two, two new builds.
Oh.
Okay, but no, it also includes people doing garages and sheds.
I was wondering if that's...
And things like that, so. We still continue to get complaints regarding the short-term rental on Cloud Nine. If I can get someone to sign a complaint, which I think I can, I am contemplating moving forward to the finding stage because I don't know what else to do. With that one.
That property's caused a lot of problems for the whole city, let alone that neighborhood down there.
Yeah.
It's time, I think, it's...
The company that is running it has a decibel meter located, installed in the house. And one of the neighbors called me, well, he called me in the middle of the night and I slept through it. I didn't answer the phone, but he called me the next morning and we discussed it. So when I got to work, I emailed the company and asked them to send me a copy of a printout of the decibel meter readings for that night and day. Decibel meetings, and this is from the company that sells, were over 100 decibels.
Wow.
From 5 o'clock at night to 5:30 in the morning.
Good lord.
We can't tolerate that.
That's ridiculous.
It is.
Gee.
It is, and the neighbors are being so tolerant about this and have, you know, they now have a number of the people who own the property, who live up in Washington, and they're talking to them regularly. They have convinced them to raise the price in hopes that that will get a better clientele in there, but that won't start for a while, there's people already there.
Now, we need a complaint, we need a sheriff involvement, and if then we may need our lawyers involved, but we can't allow our community to continue this one.
Yeah.
Well, right now, the only thing we have to go on is the nuisance complaint for noise, so that's what we will do. Okay, thank you, I needed some guidance on that.
Jamie, excuse me, aren't there some trespass issues possibly involved with that property?
Not, maybe, but I, no one's complaining about that. They're just complaining about the noise all night long.
Okay.
What patient do I have?
Yeah.
Yes, most definitely.
You have a noise complaint, but it went a bit from something else.
And we're not loving fireworks. All right, let's see, we will get the, I'm letting you know that I have a hard time finding anybody that can renew trees or do, fix things or anything like that. I've found somebody now that's been working here at City Hall. Seems to be working out real well, so hopefully he'll be around for a little bit. We're still looking for the planning secretary and I'm hoping that we will find somebody for that position soon. Just to let you know, Rapunzel is a breath away from having 155 done, chapter 155.
Sweet.
You will be getting a very large document.
Excellent.
That right now, the first thing she's doing is she's answering, this is the current language, this is the proposed language, it's three columns on the right end. This is the current, this is proposed, and this is who changed it and why. So it's a wonderful thing that she's doing, it's a lot of work and we are very anxious to see a finalization to our land use code in the next year. That means you guys are gonna have to really work.
Good in the order, Susan, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Robert?
No, nothing.
Nothing? No? I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No.
Okay.
Under no...
To me, good in the order is a big, big area, right?
Yes.
I went over to a VA clinic in Eugene and I was going, and Eugene is not Dune City, but it's my home still. And if anybody that has seen that shithole on West 11th and Belt Line, just remember, just remember, this is your state. This is, this is my, this is my country, this is my state. That kind of crap shouldn't be allowed anyplace. It's a complete embarrassment to me, that's all I can say.
I had a couple of people, including Thomas Boggs, Jamie that just mentioned, have asked me, in fact, he asked me today if we own that bucket truck that we bought and wanted to know if the city would consider renting that out. He's had several occasions in our city that he could have used that bucket truck for his work, so. If you, I'm thinking if we look at our insurance requirements, that it might, might be another way to make a few extra bucks on something that we own and it's just sitting there.
That's true.
As long as we don't get into repairs from use and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and we can write up a document that would cover that. I'm more concerned about the insurance.
Yeah.
As long as in that person's business is insured than what we should be. And I'm just thinking as long as those documents exist, it might be something that I'll pay for.
Yep.
Equipment rental is not cheap and that's all worked into the price of it is, you know, maintenance and those kinds of things, it wouldn't be cheap to rent a bucket truck.
That's true.
So, you know, and we'd help keep the cost down if we hired somebody like him to do tree removals. Bob, is that his line of work as a tree arborist or what does he do? Thomas Boggs is, he's a logger. I mean, he falls trees all the time, he has a small home mill, but he's worked for me since I bought the property and he's probably fallen half a dozen trees for us. So he's a tree guy? Yeah.
I understand he has a CCG.
And the Johnson people, is that it?
Charlie Johnson, yeah.
Charlie?
He's done half the job for us and he just did the, collapsed four trees that fell down on their property.
Those are the two people that are most active, I think, in Dune City as far as falling trees. But Thomas lives up in Mapleton, so he goes all over, but we call it anytime we've got an issue. But I just thought that that might be a way to earn a couple of them bucks as long as all the paperwork's fine.
I will check on it.
Thank you. Just to prove my point, because I can't remember if I told you this or not before, but I have discovered that as we get older, our IQ and our age become the same number. Actually, I bet my teacher told me that when I was in junior high school.
Can't wait till I'm 150, I'll tell you.
Yeah, really. All right, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? See you next month, if not soon.
All right, have a good trip.
Returning my things, by the way.
Thanks, Derek.